Tom Gross. Councilman Perry. Councilman Sprague.
Here.
Vice President Hall.
Here.
President Walker.
Here.
Mary and Ozzy.
Here.
We have Esther Donmappery.
Yes.
It's.
You're a great. Use value pins. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, the this assembled council. I am asking that you graciously grant them, one, wisdom, government amid the conflict and interest and issues of our times. Two, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people. Three, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Four, confidence in what is good and fitting. Five, the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honestness. Six, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agendas set before them today. Please give an assurance that would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved borough of Eddie Stone. Also, blessed and safe all they be and be skirted everyone. It is in your most blessed name I pray, amen. Please place a face flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider it a republic, with which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest court, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sure, during public announcements, I certainly can share with Eddie Stone community. On May first will be our reschedule of SPCA and Providence Center shop for next Sunday. From noon, from 10:00 AM to noon at Lighthouse Hall, we'll have one entrance for everyone to come in. Therefore, they'll be exiting out the other doorway. And then on May 7th will be our annual community cleanup day. Everyone can take 10 to 15 minutes around your own property, helping out other neighbors that may not be able to clean up their own area. Working together, we can all clean up and improve our community, especially before Memorial Day event and for a nice spring and summer season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Upcoming public meetings, events, we have May 2nd at 7:00 PM, council workshop meeting, followed by May 9th at 6:00 PM, our council executive session, followed by our regular council meeting at 7:00 PM.
Yes, me adjourned recently from executive team today. We had some complete issues that we haven't discussed and some.
I just thought like there's any presentations this evening. Let me start with our professional reports from the representative place. Council has been provided with financial reports for the month of March. Can we get for our. Sorry. Council has been provided with financial reports for the month of March. In March, three hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars in deposits were received into the Sherrin General. Sorry, Christine, mine's overseas.
This good?
Yes, thank you, all right.
I'll start over.
Financial reports have been provided to council for the month of March 2025. In March, three hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars of deposits were received into the Sherrin General and depository funds. Total expenditure of two hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars was dispersed, including one hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred fifteen dollars from April. The bank account balances are as follows. General fund, four hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. The depository account, three thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and one cent. The beautification account, three thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Industrial highway, Astro account, three thousand, one dollars and seventy cents. Fire company EMS Astro account, seventy thousand, two hundred thirty-one dollars, eighty-four cents. The Alliance Astro account, seventy-eight thousand, two hundred nine dollars, twenty-eight cents. The police fine report features account, seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Boeing savings account, five dollars, eighty-five cents. The Delphal lighting proceeds account, eighty thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Liquid fuels highway eight account, nine thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and seven cents. And the sewer fund, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred sixty-seven and twenty-one cents. All bank accounts for which you are aware of, as in record files through March 31, 2022. Thank you, Christine. John.
Yeah. Code of enforcement report from month of March. And two, one in total of our under the other number in section 41, 42, other number of local stop, either violation of statute. Other number of work permission filed. Other number of license issued. The amount of fees received, thirty-four hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, John Lee, so much. Do you want to give a here's a report, please?
I certainly will. Just for announcement for the public, and I just received this this afternoon. I don't even think Dawn's heard this as of yet. There will be three meetings for the Delphora project. In Eddie Stone Borough, the tunnel project will actually go along 291. However, Delphora is doing public informational meetings. The first meeting is Monday, April the 25th at 6:00 PM. It's at Darby Township Community Center, which is 1085 Hope Road in Sharon Hill. The next one is, which is the closest one to Eddie Stone Borough, is Thursday, April the 28th at 6:00 PM. That's at Garland Ball, which is the Ridley Township Municipal Building, 100 East Midday Boulevard. The third meeting is actually for those who cannot get out to the night meetings. And that will be a Zoom meeting. That will be on May the 4th. In order to watch that, you need to go on to the Delphora website. There is a link for the Zoom meeting there. So I'll get these over to you. John Reynolds, I guessed him this afternoon. If he can get me. They're supposed to be putting flyers out. It will be advertised in probably the Daily Times, the Spirit. It'll be on anyone's website that they'll put on their website. But Delphora is asking anybody that'd like to understand what the project is. This is a, this is a tunnel project. It's going to be about 100 feet deep. It's going to be 14 feet in diameter. And it's going to go from Darby Township to the Darby Creek Enjoy Authority Pump Station all the way down to the treatment plant in Chester City. As I said, through Eddie Stone Borough, it will be going along 291. So you probably won't see any, any kind of impact. Not probably, I'm going to tell you, you won't see any impact. You will not be seeing any construction within Eddie Stone Borough for this particular project. There is a couple manhole accesses that are going to be done, but at this point, they don't know where they are. Hopefully, they'll have that design work ready so they can explain what the tunnel project is and where, where it's located. But I do know along 291, there will be a couple access points for this particular tunnel. The tunnel is going to take the sewage from the Darby Creek Authority and the Northern Authority, Central Delaware County Authority, the Muppets of Paves Authority. Take that away from the city of Philadelphia. Right now, we're paying surcharges to the city of Philadelphia, not only for additional flows or I and I heard us talking about inflow infiltration with stormwater, but as well, we're paying for the city of Philadelphia's compliance long-term control improvement projects. So with, with this project, all of the sewage will be stored in the tunnel, conveyed in the tunnel down to the plant in Chester City. The Lighthouse Hall project, the deadline for the bid, that is out for bid currently, and the deadline is April the 28th, so I will have bids for you for the next meeting. I have a question here. I was asked last week. There are proposals out with signal service for the rewire and the new laser vehicle sensors, vehicle detection sensors for 291 and Seville. That cost for those, that project is forty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars. I believe that it has been budgeted, but we'll need to check that. Right now, we're on temporary power at 291 and Seville. So that would be most important that we get that project done. You have that on your list, did I cite it back to Jared or? A few other things, we are on the list for the 2022 Community Development Block Grant for the second phase of the Lighthouse project. That's a grant in the amount of eighty-nine thousand dollars. There is community comment period, there's 30-day period. So if anyone would like to, to give a push for that particular project, I would ask that you send something over to county council through the Office of Housing and Community Development. You can do that online to support that, that particular project. But as of now, typically, the projects that are listed will be the projects that are awarded funding. Otherwise, Alliance has provided us a redesign. Well, a sketch of the redesign at this point, we're waiting for formal drawings for the redesign of the center sources. So they had submissions with some elevation and some manhole locations that were shown on their plans. So we should be moving forward with that. They are moving forward. They're currently putting the, the rest of their stormwater facility in. There, the paving is started within the parking areas. So we're going to see those projects probably be completed by the end of, end of the summer. The highway industrial highway LLC, that project is restarting. We have not done any kind of revised plan at this point, but we are aware that there's been a settlement for the, for the appeal. Otherwise, I can just report the progress and answer any questions they have.
My speak. Can you elaborate on the appeal? Because on here it says no further action.
The previous council, a year ago, against us, had approved a preliminary land development plan for industrial highway LLC. They took appeal to Commonwealth Court because they wanted a preliminary final and they didn't like some of the conditions on the conditional preliminary approval. There was a revised resolution that council put forth in November, April plus of 2021. They've been decided, they'll quote me on those dates. And that resolution, after it passed, needed to go to courts for an approval by the court. They withdrew their appeal with that resolution. So right now, I thought, it's back to paper, gonna have to go through to see what exactly we're going to be doing with this, this next submission.
Thank you, Liz. Anyone from Fire EMS for the report? John, which one's for the Fire EMS report, please? March 2022, Fire EMS report, accident with injury, two, one decal. This is the EMS one, this is the day one, building fires seven total, four in Eddie Stone, one in Tynecastle. Two fire lines, one investigation, four trainings. Total runs eighteen, eight by day, ten by night. Members responding, sixty-eight average per call, three point seven seven. EMS total calls, forty-nine handled by Eddie Stone. East transports, one canceled. Total scratches for the month, thirty-one, between seven and eight AM and five PM, 10. I'm sorry, oh, seven hundred seventeen, hundred ten, seventeen hundred to twenty-three hundred ten, twenty-three hundred to seven hundred eleven. First quarter, January 1st, March 31st, EMS total run, one hundred twenty calls. Total scratches due to unit out of service and staff, ninety-three. Seventy-eight percent of EMS calls were voted for scratch, sincerely, the calories. March 2022, health report inspections done at Barnes Del Monte, also allowed, rescheduled. We discussed earlier the May community cleanup day, May 7th. SPCA shop clinic has been rescheduled to May 1st at Lighthouse Hall from 10:00 AM to noon. We are currently working to provide a veterans fair, May 13th, from 10:00 to 2:00. If that goes on as planned, I will have communication out to the public once all is confirmed, if it happens. Thank you.
Police report for March 2022, 1127 calls for service for a total of 153 years, 75 citations, 435, nine traffic accidents for a total of 24, 14 commercial deaths for a total of 40, 21 parking tickets for a total of 131, and nine criminal arrests for a total of 36.
Okay, yes. The 14 commercial, is that pretty much all Walmart shopping center all?
I would just report, I met with the attorneys for Alliance as their project continues, and also with the attorney for industrial highway as their project continues. And then I reached out to Mrs. Towne, I'm going to go over. And Lisa's office, so we continue to be on the same page. But Alliance is playing with the resolution. I'm sorry, Alliance is already has the final plan. And then industrial highway with the resolution. We're gonna have to get to the final man development agreement, the legal side of the project.
Ms. Jones. Already knows to be that, you know, in satisfied, working on. The one will be satisfied, if council makes approval tonight, on food enforcement, and other ones that are being worked on with our. A public comment, William Stewart.
William Stewart, 732, I have a, two things I see the council is going to take action. This evening, the advertising organization, 7-23. There's voting table.
Correct.
Those, those counties tend to move that toward the score. The last time I checked, the parking there is pretty much all commercial parking along the right-hand side. It's being tabled for the season, or is it being?
It's being tabled to be discussed for the.
The second question I have is everybody on board, I'm sure everybody. But I do apologize for this last month's meeting. I missed Vice President Hall's update on the municipal annual audit and financial report. That report is due the first of April of every year. By understanding, based on your report this fall from last month, is the, the audit is not going to be started until the 15th of April, is that correct?
The audit was delayed because we did not have cooperation with the previous auditor that we needed. And we had to give legal advice and files from legal and law. So that got the audit, it went to the state. There is no action needed against the borough for anything because it wasn't completed by April 1st.
So the lack of cooperation from the previous auditor was a result of the business?
Not sure the information you need to share.
You have estimated time, correct? Would you, would be completing later? But you would assume the audit will be complete.
It would have been done earlier if you would have had full cooperation from the items used with this year's auditor, from previous year's auditor. But since they draw their fee and reviews from block rates, we have legal and law. It got pushed back, even in all these categories. It was against, and everybody else's people, but why do you comment?
April 15th, the audit will be submitted. The financial report will be submitted until this evening, right? April 15th will be the day that it's submitted.
Christine.
Or at least the work.
It's, it's going to begin April 15th.
So the audit is, is going to begin April 15th.
Correct.
Have you received any information from the auditor, how long the process is going to take?
We have our this.
So is there a time frame you're able to share, or how long the audit's going to take?
It shouldn't take any longer than any of the prior year activity. It probably will be less time to do it because we're not cleaner the last several years. No.
Six to eight weeks, is that a fair assessment?
I'm not sure, Paul, you can remember how long it took us here for John to have it. I want to say it was four to six weeks last year. I, I would say we, no more than four to six weeks, and I would anticipate less time.
So would council be comfortable saying during the first, the audit would be submitted, or, or is council not at this point?
I think, we don't, I think, this is such a new order, they have, they got the information, they can't get it. Actually, about the timeline to be actually resolved.
So is all the litigation been resolved with the previous auditor? It's open and can't be commented in the public. Is the litigation complete? The litigation complete, then it could be commented in the public. The litigation is still ongoing, then it has confidentiality.
Public comment, not good. Public comment, if you have a comment to make, let's just show it, we'll make it, we will hear you out.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have anything for public comment? I, I can say. This is not over. I just think Chief Lake said it would be on that, because I don't speak loud enough. You don't talk about it. Yeah, I don't. Anyone else have anything for public comment?
I think it's. I think it's some of the speakers.
All right, we're going to move on to action items. Council made a motion to approve the regular minutes for our council meeting on March 14th and the workshop meeting on April 4th. So we're, I have a motion by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Bannon. Council on questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council made a motion to approve the treasures report, including bank reconciliations for the month of March 2022, as presented by representation. I have a motion made by Councilwoman Rose, seconded by Councilman. Councilman Sprague. Council, any questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Council made a motion to approve the cash receipts and discards mentioned on from the month of March 2022, presented by Representative. I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Bannon. Council, any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Council made a motion to accept the police report for the month of March 2022, as presented by Chief Fox, so. I don't care. I have a motion made by Councilwoman Rose and seconded by Councilman Perry. Council, any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council made a motion to accept the fire report for the month of March 2022, presented by Dawn Jones.
So.
I have a motion by Councilman Sprague, seconded by Councilman Bannon. Council on questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. May I have a motion to accept the engineering report for the month of March 2022, as presented by Senator? I have a motion by Councilman Sprague, seconded by Councilman Bannon. Council, any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council made a motion to accept the DCO report for the month of March 2022, as presented by John Lyman, so. I have a motion by Vice President Hall and seconded by Councilman Bannon. Council, any questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Council made a motion to accept the health inspection report for the month of March 2022, as presented by Dawn Jones. I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Bannon. Council, any questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to approve Norm Quinn as the Eddie Stone Borough Highway Maintenance Supervisor? I have a motion made by, by Councilman Bolton, seconded by Councilwoman Rose. Council, any questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to approve Citizens Committee seats this evening? I don't like to make motions to approve. These will be broken out individually for each committee, each person. So I have a motion by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Bannon. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Council made a motion to approve the work for the deteriorated deteriorated sanitary store manhole located on two ninety one at Seville. Ms. Jones, can you make sure that is updated in the agenda? And not just so just yet. Yes. I'm sorry, I have a motion by Bill, seconded by. My Councilman Bannon. Council, any questions?
Could we get a clarification of that?
Absolutely. Or do I speak to? Clear the question of what it is to the resident.
Uh, there's manhole on Seville and two ninety one uh needs to be replaced. The uh. The ring it holds the the man cover itself is bad along with the cover being too small. So it needs to be replaced because every time a truck runs over, it goes upside down. That's why there's a plate down there right now. So Mr. Tanya is going to pull, she says about seven thousand dollars on one of that. Four three votes, correct?
Typically, the. Typically, it wouldn't cost that much to replace the framing cover. However, because it's on two ninety one, we need to make sure that whoever's working on it is safe. So I added monies in there for flagging company, traffic maintenance company to come in. Which is why it's seven thousand dollars. Yes, what I'm going to do is I'm going to I'm going to I I need to get three telephonic votes. I'm going to do that. And if we get all three, fine, if we only get one, as long as it's within that process and to the to the given. I believe we ought to know what had to do with, I'll let Councilmen send a recommendation out. Moving on it prior to the next meeting. It's definitely a health safety.
Thank you. Council, any other further questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to approve the update to the T-Mobile Internet for the Eddie Stone Light House Hall? Oh, boy. I have a motion made by Councilwoman, seconded by. Time unanimously. Seconded by Rose. Rose. Councilwoman Rose, thank you. Council, any questions? I don't know anything about it, so I have plenty of questions. Okay, but I was also be headed to that. So all the time that we asked with the internet passcode, there were those that didn't do that. We were all trying to go and pick an app. TV search down there. RCU provides a. Phone line, but nobody provided internet. And T-Mobile's the chief.
Mr. Ball, this is in the Borough Hall?
No, White House Hall.
Okay. Is that for public use?
Well, it will be, assuming.
Or just for the office?
The idea is to the idea is to use the portal so that the officers and.
And they can see all the cameras.
And link to it. And then there'll be a wireless router added to it so that kids who are using White House Hall would have free internet access. You know, for the public.
And then it would help with the movie night as well with the streaming.
Right, because there's a lot of streaming down there.
And they're going to make sure that it's covered throughout the whole White House Hall?
Whatever the router covers, it'll definitely cover the classroom.
Yeah.
I don't know how well it reaches the gym and.
If I send the other. My sports.
Spying.
Favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, at this time, we had two motions on the agenda that I would like to table. At this time, we were going to read them, but we were not finished them yet as far as ordinance number two seven seven dash seven to change. The speed limit in the borough from twenty five miles an hour to fifteen miles an hour on all streets except Seville, Simpson, Eddie Stone and nine, which are the main roads. Uh, the other one is to approve the advertisement for ordinance two seven seven dash twenty three to add no parking on Fourth Street between the Fourth Street Bridge and Eddie Stern Avenue. There's a few things that we need to go into with both of those ordinances before we finalize the free themselves. I'm asking. Sure.
I think the public should have a way if they think it's a good idea to go and speed them at fifteen miles an hour. Especially the, you know, the smaller roads, you know. Basically, all the local streets except the nine street. And it's almost like the conflict election in twenty five miles an hour, pretty fast and coming down between some cars. I would say I'd say if it'd be one hundred and twenty five, it's better to have fifteen, twenty five, if you have a twenty five or thirty. Well, they rarely stop at the south side.
Why, I think the other. Right, and I mean, there's not a lot of distance between the south side and all of our side streets. Right, you're right, me too.
Let's add one, but it's a. Uh, going to be attempted, uh, use site where people that are speeding.
It's hard to catch somebody speeding during.
But it's obvious. Yeah. Obviously, they're going more than fifteen, but it's harder to tell when you're going like twenty five or thirty, you know.
Well, it's it's still it's still tough. It's a matter of hopefully that they'll do twenty five instead of thirty five. Not be twenty fifteen. Not like. It's like not.
See, that they have to be followed for so far. I'm sorry.
And they have to follow for.
There's there's guidelines for you to take it. So if we use like aerobic devices, I believe it's a hundred foot between two fixed objects. With parking in some of the blocks, some blocks, they have blocks with more. Some areas where there's T intersections, like maybe eleven, National Fludier, with the. Over in Mark. It has gotten a lot better though, I will say that.
It'd be nice if you said you were public comment.
We go through now, put the stop sign up. I think it's Paul's there.
Yeah, that's true.
There's a Paul's wall there.
Are you saying sure? They want to, you know, T-Bone.
Yeah.
There was not that too long ago, there was there was somebody on T-Bone.
And a kid almost got hit there.
I mean, that's not.
They're not going out, they're going out making a. It's how we do.
President Walker's. Twenty five miles an hour typically residential speed limit. The only time he would typically sit fifteen would be in a school zone. You know, I'd love to hear a comment from our engineer. You know, it's been over seventy years. Since speed limit signs have been in place and just wondering why it took seventy years for someone to come up with wanting to change down to fifteen? Is it even legal to go fifty mile an hour in this companion in a residential street? I thought twenty five was the lowest threshold to go.
I I think that's outside of my purview. From a store, sorry, from a traffic engineering, unless it's a state owned road in the borough. Never need to do with the borough, feels right for the borough with the municipality.
Yeah, you're going to have a lot of kids playing too, man.
I'm not I'm not opposed to go. I just don't want to spend the money to go fifteen, only to find out you got to change the size back to twenty five, but then it suddenly piles up.
Does everybody speeds? He speeds on Simpson, he speeds on Eddie Stern Avenue. I just seen a guy with a white car speeding up and he's taking around mid-street.
It's a big, I think a big difference. I've driven a truck thirty five years, I'm not going to be in that city anymore. It's just gotten so worse. I mean, speeding, red lights, everything.
But I think that's why.
But that's every thirty minute ninety five.
What they think, you know, what they what they're feeling.
I'm going to order, I got I I need more fifteen minute signs. I got to order them going. I don't know how many, at least eighty, ten. They pay it on my street, lady on Club Seventeen playing. Ten years, fifteen years ago, all the kids out there playing.
All right, we're going to go through the appointments. The voters will be waiting to be published today.
Fifteen years.
Can we stop the side clubbing so that we can hear what side has said on the video? So I'm going to read off a list of names for each committee that are in the middle of terms that they do not need to be re-uploaded. So if anyone's in the middle of a term currently, they will not be. Stay based on the meeting minutes over the last several years. So with the public safety committee. There is Bob Lee, who's the current chair of the public safety committee. Council, may I have a motion to appoint Bill Stanton to the public safety committee with a six year term? For. I have a motion by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Bannon. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council made a motion to appoint Christie Viasello to the public safety committee with a six year term. I have a motion by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilwoman Rose. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to appoint Ron Hughes to the public safety committee with a six year term? I have. I have a motion made by. Just kind of unanimously here. I mean simultaneously. Not unanimously. I have a motion made by Councilman Spray, seconded by Councilwoman Rose. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to appoint Faith Ferby to the public safety committee with a six year term? For. I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilwoman Rose. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, the next committee is zoning hearing board. We currently have John Allen on the board. Council, may I have a motion to appoint Stan Sigg to the zoning hearing board with a three year term? I have a motion made by Councilman Perry, seconded by Councilwoman Rose. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to appoint James Houston to the zoning hearing board with a three year term? Rachel. Who's going to be? So satisfied, nobody knows. Thank you. Hi, girl. Thank you. James Allen. I have a motion by Councilman Bannon. Seconded by Councilwoman Rose. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, we currently have on the civil service commission Judy Rose, Eugene Riley and Paul Junior. Judy Fokanda. Eugene Riley, Paul and Pauls are already serving on the civil service commission. They are going to continue their terms. Council made a motion to appoint Karen Reeves, the civil service commission, with a six year term. Second. I have a motion by Councilman Perry, seconded by Councilwoman Rose. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council made a motion to appoint Tom Riley as an alternate to the civil service committee with a six year term. I have a motion by Councilman Bannon, seconded by Vice President Hall. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. I'd make a motion to appoint Paul Colfer as an alternate to the civil service committee with a six year term. Well, then why is this? Yeah, that is. That should have been removed. Yeah, I was hoping this was. Please need to explain. Uh, so this is still in there? Yeah. Dawn, put a motion to appoint Paulus. So currently on planning commission, we have Derek Johnson and. Make motion to appoint Sean Shields to the planning commission with four year term. I mean. Give a motion by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Spray to appoint Sean Shields to the planning commission with four year term. Council, any question? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to appoint Bill Stewart to the planning commission with a four year term? I have a motion made by Councilman Spray, seconded by Councilwoman Bolton to appoint Bill Stewart to the planning position with a four year term. All in favor? I have a motion made by Councilman Sprague, seconded by Councilman Bolton, to appoint Bill Stewart to the planning commission with a four-year term. All in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Bannon? Councilman Bolton? Councilwoman Rose? Councilman Perry? Councilman Sprague? Vice President Hall? No. President Walker? Five no's, two yeses. Councilman, I have a motion to appoint Jesse Colfer to the planning commission with a four-year term. So we're. I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Bannon. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Councilman, I have a motion to remove Christine Copper from Eddie Stone Recreation Board due to lack of communication. I have a motion made by Councilwoman Rose, seconded. I have a second by Councilwoman Bolton. Council, any questions? So, yeah, so. Communication or participation with records since November. She has been reached out to several times. In several places by several different people trying to just kind of give. Record needs to be organized. We can't do that without all members being present. I didn't want to do this. The better, you know, for the. The circumstances in the record, just try to get them where they need to go and what they need. Council, any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to.
So on record currently, we have Casey Smith, Amy Now. Barbara Rolls. Bill Money. Paula Colfer, Renee Perry. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Victoria Valens to Recreation Board with a four-year term. I have a motion by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilwoman Perry. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tom Anita, and I don't know how to pronounce her last name, but I don't know what's her.
I'm pretty sure it's Viata.
To the Recreation Board, as we all know, thoroughly, with a four-year term.
I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Perry. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tiffany Grayborn to the Recreation Board.
I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilwoman Perry. Council, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, any questions? Comments? Thoughts? Anything?